I'm catching you, I'm catching you, give me a minute.
Do we have a motion on those minutes?
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
Motion to accept and second.
A second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, and pass. Underhold. We have the September writing contest.
Alright guys, I wanted to tell you a little bit about the writing contest before I introduce Jackson, but we had sixteen people submit some of their writings and they were all really, really good, but you guys are not going to believe this. The winner of September's writing contest is Jackson Boone, who's also a Coward City resident. So first, and I will tell you, anyone that submits an application, it goes to Kada, they don't know how old they are, they don't know where they're from. And I mean, how crazy is it that August and September are both Coward City residents? But I wanted to introduce you to Jackson and he is here right now. So I'm gonna bring him up. Hello, Jackson. Get you unmuted.
There he is.
So if you could just tell us a little about yourself, Jackson, and what you're writing, how you're inspired to write about your submission that you've made.
My name is Jackson Boone, I'm a junior at Marshall County High School and I really like to play soccer and I really enjoy reading history, reading history books especially, and I guess that's kind of where I got my inspiration. I wrote, I read this biography about John Sherman Cooper and like his, you know, his life in the Senate especially really just inspired me because he always led it by certain principles that he held really dear to his heart and that he got from when he, where he was raised and he really leaned heavily on where he came from in Kentucky and that influences his visions later on in life and that really, really inspired me because he stuck to his guns no matter what, so.
Awesome. Well, on behalf of the council, I'm sure the mayor will say congratulations as well, but we are happy to have you as our September winner.
Thank you.
Good job, Jackson.
Yes, very good, thank you.
If you guys haven't had a chance to read his submission, you can go to our website under the blogs and he, there's an article written about him that includes his entry, so I encourage everyone to go on there and read that. The next deadline for the writing contest is October 1st, so if you know of anyone and you want to encourage them to participate, I would greatly appreciate it. Thanks for joining us, Jackson, and congratulations.
Yeah, great job.
One of the things we strongly hope to do with the writing contest is to develop more of a recognition of cultural values, writing being a foundation for culture itself, and ability to be able to communicate and be able to share ideas and be able to present it clearly and precisely. And this is the kind of thing we're hoping to get, and I believe Roger Jackson and our other winner are already too great at science and would have been. Good job. Okay. Any comments on the writing contest? Let's go around and get the new bits. Two items initially while talking about the related back to water sewer. The first one is request to enter into agreement with the particular water finance corporation by a loan amount of more than seventy thousand dollars for the replacement of meters to the electronic meter of the automated meter. Roger here to talk about that if you have a question, we discussed that previously. This is getting no funding, being run around, removing monthly charge that we have applied, we discussed earlier on for off month, will be applied to this step. Be able to advertise that all the time. Anyone have any questions for Roger related to this project?
Roger has the scope changed in any significant manner since we talked about it last?
No, I don't know if it's here, man. So the scope of the project that we have it now would be installation of the electronic meters and there'll be a drive-by system initially. We'll have the data collection equipment on city trucks, we're looking at possibly putting one of them on the garbage truck, allow that reflect all the the data as they make the route at the prescribed interval and then the other one out in the more remote areas of our system will just drive by with it initially. The design would be set up to eventually go to advanced metering infrastructure where we would actually transmit that data over the radio system.
Roger, Jackson, what does that mean?
Yeah.
Okay, any questions for Roger? If not, do we have a motion to enter the agreement, please take your role, water finance corporation loan for the seventy thousand dollars.
I'll make the motion.
I'm motion, need to make the motion, have a second.
Second.
Second, any additions on the schedule?
May you pull your mic out here.
Any additional discussion? In all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, all in favor, all in, not in favor, raise your right hand, say once. Good job, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is for the water sewer department as well, including Kentucky infrastructure, state funding, revolving loan fund, two million nine oh eight five with improvements of the influence station, wastewater treatment plant, and this land is improvements to the wastewater plant for wastewater treatment. Roger, you want to talk about that one?
Yeah, I sure can, this is part of the project that was identified in the corrective action plan for the grant order that we entered into with the department of environmental protection probably two years ago, but today we spent probably one point four million dollars plus or minus on improvements to the system and the project that we want to fund through the state revolving fund loan would be the project that we would rebuild our influence lift station and also do some other improvements to the lagoon, the affluent lift station, affluent force lane, and then outfall of the user. So we're essentially rebuilding the wastewater plant totally, total rehab. Then the work we've done so far is really yielded good results, the purpose of replacing the infinite lift stations to eliminate sanitary sewer overflows upstream of their lift stations, so we're increasing the capacity and that's just, these are things that we have left to do to comply with what we're committed to on the corrective action plan. Okay, the loan amount, I can tell you, is close to about a little around two point nine million dollars. We're still in the engineering, really don't know exactly how much of that we're going to need to do the project and we'll keep you advised to go forward. That will be based on the estimates at that time, the interest rate's one point five percent on that, on that particular loan.
Okay, you have a motion to allow your entry to the agreement for two point nine million for the Kentucky infrastructure.
I'll make a motion.
Motion, you have a second.
Second.
Any more discussion? Okay, raise your right. All home, same time. This time, full water sewer, the funding is coming down. I think what is put that up here, Roger, to get the sound going too. In your package included the capital fund for wastewater and for the water. Do you have that in your, to the general plan? Water supply. Showing you the plan of work that is being proposed, needing to be completed to keep that system in highest quality as it can provide, looking to the future or the future development that system is continuing to operate its most efficient to test. Part of that process, we talked about is major to a pound, where we move to add to the water department a million dollar line of credit that would take your all money from time to time for those kinds of things. When we restructured, as we talked to this program and I met with Roger and Dan and talked about the borrowing and how this is going, whether we want to use some city funds to do that for the cost. It's our opinion that if we could simply increase that line to one point three million and let the entity a minimum of five thousand a month back toward that line, a minimum every month of five thousand. So we can track that every month, they know exactly where it is, and you'll know exactly where it is. And that would be the best and most efficient for them and provide them the best opportunity for their cash flow to be able to handle. And the plants are operating well, doing well, making lots of money, they can provide more cash to that line and get paid back down. Of course, when they pay down, it's amazing to see them again, but that's what we won't see happen, we won't see the success of having the system to be able to have a cash flow condition, be able to handle that debt load, to get that line down and eventually not to have that line a necessity of which we're trying to recommend, they would rent that line to one point three million, a million, to give them that flexibility and the ability to complete this capital project. So if I could have a motion on that, I would appreciate it.
I make a motion.
A motion, you have a second.
I'm second.
Okay, so we have a motion, second, to increase the line to one point three million, to one million. And caveat of that is, it would be a minimum of five thousand dollars of the balance back to the line on a monthly basis and the court will, every month, show you exactly what that balance is for your normal withdrawal. Looking for a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All same time. Thank you very much. Okay, Roger.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, counsel, appreciate it.
One thing we haven't talked about against the law over the past is the water sewer department and actually how that functions. There has been some time to time, some misunderstanding that the water sewer is a standalone entity by itself and the water sewer is not a standalone entity by itself, the water sewer is your water sewer department. You're the ones who make the call, you have a board that has operated for you, but you're the ones who are going to call particularly funding and face issues of their budget and issue the rights needed to capital improvement plan, if you want something to happen or not to happen. So we want to involve several. If you want to, counsel, pay your head, so you'll know exactly where we are in the process because this is a key component to future growth of Coward City and our ability to be able to operate this system at the most efficient. The way it's all looking, we don't want, we don't want any new one, we want efficiency and we want the very best product to be provided. This one will front down. We keep informed, you know, we report on that mostly so you can keep up the light on this capital project. Okay. For John.
Sir. You ready for the bids?
Should be as open as we get.
Last Friday, we had bids in for the Batumina overlay for the runway and the taxiway. Can y'all hear me okay? Okay. Let me get to the right one here. We received one bid on the overlay and taxiway for a six hundred and twenty one thousand two hundred and sixty dollars thirty five cents with an alternate of thirty two thousand eight seventeen forty five. That would have been added to that if that alternate is selected, I don't have that right in front of me, the exactly alternate. Tim, do you have what that alternate was that had, had to do with the actual fabric, didn't it?
The alternate was for the fabric and Keith is recommending that we use fabric on a portion of the runway. My guess is it's the center core, but I'll let, I'll let Keith explain that at an appropriate time, but it's, it's for the fabric.
Did anybody, did you hear that? Is it just mine? It's, okay, I'm having trouble in here hearing, I'm, alright. Tim, does that actually go into what was, that that was actually under or below the engineer's estimate?
Because it was all in total under the engineer's estimate, the state will likely, and verbally they have already committed to do it, to adding the alternate.
Alright, so recommendation, recommendations for Smith, Jim Smith contracting for the overlay.
Let's see, what's the total, John, with the, with the alternate?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
What's the total with the alternate, what's the total cost?
The alternate was thirty three thousand and it was for fabric and for the cleaning and restriping of the taxiway.
Okay. This should be borne by the state.
I'm sorry, sir, I'm not ignoring you, I can't hear you.
I spoke loud, loud, you couldn't, that was on purpose. Put your church ears on, listen.
I guess I need to turn up my hearing aid.
Thank you. Okay, so then, do we have a motion to accept the year, six fifty four? I'll make sure that's coming from the power.
Refresh my memory, is this, is this part of the grant or a portion of the state's paying?
It's, it's a one hundred percent state grant.
Oh, then I make a motion.
You know, right. We have a motion, accept.
Okay.
A second.
The tea hangers? Oh, we got a second.
Nathan. Nathan, second. Again, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, I'll hold on like slam. Okay, good, now the second part of that, number two, portion of that.
Sound, my sound keeps going out, I'm sorry. The second one was for airport tea hangers. Sir.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, we received four bids in on that. The first bid that you see of the first column, left end column, is a column with bifold doors, they actually are left, bifold doors that actually scissor upward and that way they're not interfering with anybody else's in, access to their hanger. The second one with the alternate is actually the cost if they use sliding doors as opposed to the bifold doors. And in looking at these, the, the best bid overall came in with Alan Cersei builders and that is with the bifold doors. I think DK Construction had one without the bifold, just the sliding doors, but the bifold doors will actually bring value to the hangers that we can actually amortize out and actually get a return of our investment within twenty years.
On, on Alan Cersei, he's the only one.
And part of that is actually, Tim can actually talk to you about, part of that is for the hangers and part of that is for the asphalt and the base that the hangers will sit on and that's actually being funded through the state.
My question, what I pointed, was pointing out is the, on that one, the alternate plan is more expensive for, from Alan Cersei, the alternate plan is more expensive than the original, the bifold door plan.
That is.
None of the other ones are, you know, they're lower.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct, that was actually brought to his attention and he did say that it was, and I'm, I think it had, I couldn't give you the exact answer other than maybe the bifold doors were in stock or, and he was not having to wait on them. But in his case, he had the lower bid with the bifolds as opposed to the sliders and we did get a clarification that that bid at one point three is actually for the, the bifold doors, the lower of the two.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, now, John, break that out because it'd be included the, the work that the state will pay for. So what part of that is just a hang?
One more time, please.
So what's the cost of the two hang, which the state pays for the rest of that project, so how much is?
The cost on the hangers was around, I believe that's what your question was, the cost on the hangers was about five hundred and fifty three thousand of that dollar figure. The rest of that is, would be state funds. They had one, Tim, can you say what the exact amount was for that? For the state, what their portion of that was going to be?
Um. Well, unfortunately, I don't have, for some reason, I don't have that number written down, but it's.
Linda, do you have, you don't have it either?
I'm, I'm gonna tell you what the hang of ours is.
I do know that the hanger, it's in the, hang on just a minute.
John, I have, for the hanger cost, I have five forty six, three fifty nine.
Okay, there was a breakdown on that sheet. But I know it was, um, the, the breakdown on that works out to where, on a three percent note, our cost to pay back the hangers would cost, each cost, it would be around a little, around two hundred dollars a month per hanger for the twenty year period, which is a ease, easily accessed or easily attained monthly fee that we could get and David and I both could tell you that we've been just run over with calls of people wanting hangers or bays, mostly from those who live in this area or, or either fly in on the weekends, they've got ha, lake houses, so.
Well, when I would have looked at that, at the top, of all the ways, right? And on the period of time, they'll take you to twenty, you're right in front of you, right? It seems to me that there's no real rush to pay them off. I think that the best approach would be a thirty year note, that you give you about a twenty two hundred dollar a month payment and that will give you a thirty two hundred dollar a month income stream from the hangers. Take that thousand dollars and I would recommend put that thousand dollars into a capital improvement fund, a savings account for future improvements to that hang that may be required, some kind of general maintenance, so you get them on being built and you're not getting rid of hanging on to it. I think that'd be the best approach to that project.
What, what other expenses are going to be involved with operating these hangers? I mean, we're going from a, we're going from evaluating bids to talking business plans here, I'm getting a little, little cross-eyed, but I mean, the city gonna, gonna have to maintain insurance and then I'm assuming there's some power that we're probably not going to have, does each hanger have its own power meter? No?
I'm sorry, say again, Jane.
It can.
Oh, Tim.
Okay. So it would be like a, like a, maybe a, something most of us are familiar with, like a marina, just kind of a smaller little meter or something?
Yes.
Okay. So we will, as far as the city expenses go, we will have, as mayor pointed out, we're gonna have, you know, some excess monies here and we, we put those on a special account for maintenance and maybe future capital, somehow we're getting feedback.
Then also don't forget, this year we should be on the, on the federal registry for appropriation one hundred and twenty five thousand a year and become as an operational income, it comes to the facility already. We have enough craft on time, that should happen this year. Tim, we have feelings or when that, you know, if it's gonna be made?
We fully anticipate that we'll be on the list.
Yeah, we have the crowd, sure, nobody's getting made.
No one has seen it, it's, will likely be out the week of the twenty eighth.
Okay. And then the, and of course fueling done as well, will be some more generation income.
So back to these bids, what's the recommendation on the bids?
I would recommend we do those, those are reasonable costs, two hundred and fifty thousand piece, the tea hangers aren't exactly what we thought they were cost. We've already looked around at those opportunities and put other people at pay. And that amortization debt, being able to amortize it over a reasonable period of time, and be able to capture the additional money. It's a, for the airport and for the pilots, it is the key to that airport's longevity. Those hangers, if you have a million dollar craft, you want a hundred foot city and that's the kind of craft, kind of hanging they want, they want those doors, not a sliding door, but a sliding door and pairs the unit next to it, when you slide them in front of it, you're impacting the outside of it. These doors swing open, so you don't have the same problem. It's what they want for two thousand dollars a month, that's where that rates start and we should be able to do that each. In fact, real soon, immediately, starting to get in the list, there are people who wish to have craft near and some guys who are already there have more than one craft, so I don't talk to the city, there are others who will be wanting the craft as well. The pilots coming here don't issue any of these buys quickly, that should happen before you begin related and ready.
Well, I'm so confused. These bids right here, we've opened bids and this is for two different alternatives of two eight bay tea hangers, so that we're talking, this is for sixteen. two different alternatives of two eight bay tea hangers, so that we're talking, this is for sixteen bays. So are we looking to, to accept a bid on this thing at this point? We are. So what's the recommended uh bid?
Is the bid with not the sliding door, the other door?
The bifold.
It, yes, that's, that is correct. It is the, the bid with the added alternate one, which is the bifold doors.
Uh, I thought that was the reverse, I thought the.
I thought, yeah, I thought the alternate was the, the sliding doors.
I think he was my reading, he was reading off the message.
That was, that was why you.
I.
Okay, Tim.
That's correct. I was wrong, uh my statement was incorrect. The bifold doors were, was the original bid, the added alternate was expected to be cheaper with sliding doors.
Oh, that's what I read.
We're, we're being asked to accept the Alan Cersei bid.
That's our recommendation.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept that bid as presented.
I'll second.
Motion and second.
How about a conversation, just to make it perfectly clear? So for one point three million, we're talking about adding sixteen hanger slots.
That is correct.
Okay.
With bifold doors.
At one point three, the state of Kentucky will bear six hundred and fifty-four thousand, they call. So overhead that costs is more about state Kentucky. Oh, that corresponds to, no, I don't, you're all lying, yeah, five hundred forty-six.
So we're gonna finance the remainder on a thirty year note.
Whatever we recommend is.
Use the real, um, pay for the rest.
There's, you don't already pay, pay the penalty, so you, so you want to do, but there's really no benefit to you paying off.
So is, is this uh congruent with the recommendation of the Airport Board?
Yes, that record was going to be on it months ago, we came before the bid from the Airport Board, I was there.
What was, what was the budgeted amount?
I, I don't know if we budgeted because we didn't know what it was gonna be at that point.
It's the mayor's estimate at the bottom.
I guess I'm asking a how question. So we accept this bid for one point three. Um, how does the cash flow? How does that work?
Well, we want cash flow, well, part of the money. Part of the money. The Congress of Kentucky will pay their part of five hundred and sixty thousand, nothing with the figures. And the rest of that will be our cost. And then when we talk to the league cities about the availability of those funds, that's where the three percent rate came from. And that money's available to us at any time.
And the payments will be made from the rent on the hang, correct?
And that's why we want those hangers rented before they get completed, that's what we are up. And the pilots, sure, maybe that can happen, they'll assist those and they can do that.
Did I answer the question, Gene?
Well, yes, and, and now, so, do we, if we accept this, are we okay from a budgetary standpoint? Are we looking to have to take a budget action here?
Glenda?
Actually, you will be taking the budget action, you're proving by the part of money.
The money will be.
You're right. That'll happen at the end of the year.
I think part of my problem is I can't have here. Um, Lynn, I couldn't hear your reply.
Yeah, I think, you know, in the year, we may be able to amend the budget. But just authorize the ability to spend that money exceeding whatever the budget might be at the point, we just amended at the end of the year. Which we do down the time.
You're muted, Gene.
So that's the only questions I have. I think we have the motion and the second and uh it's been a long process to uh to get to this point.
Do you have any more questions? Do you have a motion and a second? To accept, move forward, all in favor of you right hand? Okay, pose like sign. Okay, thanks. We, more than having a regular meeting for the, for the airport guys and they'll be excited because this is the one thing that they've been asking for for a long time, this is the key for craft to be on site. And there's some pilots now who we really want to make sure we did this, so they get their ones here, because they, they need their craft inside. Thank you. Now, John, let's talk about the fuel services again, because here's the, the most frustrating thing to me. I've never saw anything in my life that I thought spoke of government more than this fuel deal. This government all over.
Okay, the uh, we had two responses to our bid proposals. One was from World Fu- Fuel Services, which is primarily a Phillips sixty-six. Um, provider of the other Titan Aviation, which is a uh shell provider. Um, both were submitted, um Jet A, you can see the price per gallon. This is of certain dates, these dates, these prices change and, and fluctuate. Uh based on their indexes, based on the cost of fuel, et cetera, et cetera. Abgas um was significant as far as World Fuels goes against Titan, however, the, the whole proposal is not really based on just the cost of fuel, cau- uh the cost per gallon of fuel because um, the fuel card systems, uh there's payback. Uh Titan had a better, had less of a charge towards us. Um, uh as far as the percentages on the sale of the fuel, uh World Fuels was a little higher. Um. Both provide training, uh both provide uh other services that go along with it. The biggest issue that we, we have is that the um World Fuel Services basically ends just below the Ohio River. Paducah, Marion, Aaron Henderson and Owensboro, those are our closest fuel um uh airports that take Phillips sixty-six. Um. Mayfield, Murray, uh Princeton, Fulton, Hopkinsville. Uh, Yee and City are all Titan um users. The biggest thing we have to consider is, in reality, is since we have four thousand gallon tanks, load of fuel is eight thousand to eighty-five hundred, depending on the type of fuel that you're getting. And so to save on the cost of the fuel, we need, it's best for us to get split loads. We can get split loads with more opportunity with split loads on Titan Aviation as opposed to World Fuel Services. Uh Paducah has large tanks, they take full loads and they move fuel easily and fast. Marion would be our, our, really our only real um opportunity to share fuel cost as far as getting split loads. Now going through Titan, um, un- unfortunately, the price is a little higher, but we have a better opportunity to get split loads through Mayfield and the other communities that we have below, basically below that imaginary line, it looks like. Um. So at this point, in talking with Dennis Mason, who is the chairman of the Airport Board, um because of the availability to get split loads, um, that's one of the biggest deciding factors on our recommendation of Titan Aviation fuels as opposed to World Fuels. Uh when I talked to Keith, he's not here to, to back that up, so it would be, but he did, he said he could support that. Not necessarily could he recommend because it was not their bid process, but he could support our decision based on the um the split load availa- availability through Titan that we don't necessarily have uh as readily available with World Fuels. Both companies are good companies. There's no, as far as one being better than the other, no. Um, the biggest thing is, is availability of split loads um. And they kinda, they play off each other with that as far as it goes, that you've got World Fuels with a little bit, little bit less on the abgas. Um, and then um, but the, the credit cards sales will actually be, if it's not a brand, if it's not World Fuel or sixty-six's card or Titan or Shell's card, there's gonna be a charge that we, that comes out of our sale. Those charges are higher normally through World Fuel than they are Titan. So.
Well, the real, the, the, the real issue here is the ability to share a load. And that's important to us, will be important to us for a long time. Um, and functioning of those other airports to us, I might say conceivable. Cost, cost, the cost is so close and the price so fluctuates. And that's really not even, we're gonna mark ours up, according to what we marked up and their price difference, maybe a few pennies, but that's nothing very available to be able to share that on. And so I agree, that's the best process here. Do you want any questions about that?
So really, we're evaluating awarding this contract based more on the service factors than the, the data on the table.
I would have to say yes.
So has the, the, the board recommendation?
Well, it's, it's, Dennis Mason is the chairman, myself, we recommend based on our review of it, uh Titan Aviation.
Do we, did, did, do we have any references on Titan? Is, is Titan, look at Mr. Haskell here, Titan's a well-known company?
Uh Titan is not only well-known, but they have eighty or ninety percent of the general aviation airports in Tennessee and Kentucky.
Yeah.
Um, and while I have the mic, I'll simply add my two cents worth, I, you, I cannot stress enough the importance of having neighbors with the same vendor because split loads are a necessity for all of you.
Right.
And that's, that's extremely important. And the credit card issue is you, you, the credit card gain is, is important as well because that's ninety-nine percent of your sales.
Sounds like a pretty good recommendation to me, then.
It's the best I can do.
Well, I'll make a motion, we go with Titan, if we're ready for that.
A motion to accept that bid, you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, raise your right hand? Pose like sign. A good job, thanks. And that wasn't the negative part, I wouldn't talk about the fuel system, what I was repaying was, that in this installation process, came my attention today, that we have another holdup now with the electrical inspector. Because the company that put it in apparently didn't do what they were supposed to do upfront with the electrical connection. And I'm not real happy with those folks. Um. Figured out a way to tell them that sooner or later. But um, I don't know where that thing is, no idea, but we're gonna find out tomorrow, I'll call the commissioner first thing. See where that process is. A fuel system is supposed to be installed almost in the ground a year ago, they're still not putting any fuel. And that doesn't do us any good at all. Okay. Start with the annual paving in twenty twenty-one.
Okay, the uh twenty tha- twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one paving revolution project uh war um bids for paving came in uh today at two o'clock, uh we received two, one from Jim Smith, one from uh Central Paving. Uh Central Paving uh had the low bid in the amount of one hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and seven dollars. Um. After my review and then uh Matt Browley with HDR's review, uh we recommend the awarding the project to Central Paving for one sixty-six, six oh seven.
And you've got a three on the ball, Smith?
One more time?
Oh, Smith bid.
I'm not hearing. Oh, Smith was one seventy-three and change.
Okay, you guys want to get on that? Okay, good. And you have a few versions of recommendations, I have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
A motion?
Thank you.
Except central beer. Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand? Pose like sign. Good, thanks. We made a consideration of an approval resolution through twenty twenty-two oh four, authorizing filing among Colorado's relief fund application with D L G for reimbursement expense. Is that in the packet, is that in your packet? Get a chance to read that, if you want to get any money back, be sure you want to get that back. So, so I'm gonna make the motion to approve the resolution.
You wanna read that one?
Not necessary, they got it, then read.
Greg shaking his head, no, I'll take that as, they don't have to.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion and second? Any additional discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand? Pose like sign. Now for the league of cities, item number D, the consideration of an approval from the resolution twenty-five, twenty oh five, designating September twenty twenty as city. We want to recognize that and as to we, as we September is city government month.
So where is this curriculum coming for, from?
It's a little legacy, is it, John, you know?
I received this from a KLC um email and they had that at the bottom and so to narrow and answer your question, I'm not sure, but I
It says that.
In the past, in the past, it's, it's came from the league. They provided. I don't have, they, I know they had car rentals one year, but I don't know what they've got this time.
It is here.
Is it on there?
Providing teachers with lesson plans, a coloring activity book and information guide.
So we'll find out tomorrow how you, what you have to do in access stuffs.
Okay, I, I was asking because I didn't know about what age group they were wanting to target and then it's talking about um, how they encourage the city officials to be involved and collaborate with the elementary schools and you know, we can't have anybody in our school right now, unfortunately. So I just didn't know if you all had any more ideas behind this or you're just declaring this government month.
Well, we're gonna start government month, we're gonna find out in the league what they have to, to provide to the students and how that, these be accessed. We'll, we'll find it out tomorrow.
Okay.
I, I don't recall in the past that what they had was broke out specifically for any particular age group. It seemed to me it was for elementary school children primarily. And the older you get in the elementary school, maybe that, maybe somebody will be a little too young for the older and too older for the young, so I don't know how they, that's get it. We will find that tomorrow.
Okay.
So do we have a motion to make that? Resolution? Resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Motion in the second.
Okay.
Any additional discussion?
That Chris? Okay.
If you're on a favor raised your right hand? Close like sign. The item E, we've already taken care of that one, we need to read this water. Greg, do we need to read that measure of water?
No, you don't need to read it.
Okay.
Just, it, it's just, just for them to vote on it. They've already passed it, haven't they?
Yes, they have. But we didn't.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, the first reading of an ordinance, repeating and replacing ordinance twenty ten oh one related to cable television services. Greg, you have that one?
Yep. Hang on a second. Sentence a thick packet. There it is. Okay, I'll just read the summary of it.
That's what we prefer.
Okay. By the way, just so you guys realize what I'm reading, uh, when we, when we publish a summary, any section dealing with fees or taxes has to be published in full. But when we read it, we don't have to read those sections in full. So I won't read everything that's on the written summary, just because I don't have to. So here it is. The City Council of Calvert City has enacted an ordinance to govern cable television franchises within the city, replacing the former, former cable television franchise ordinance identified as ordinance number twenty ten dash oh one. The new cable franchise ordinance addresses the following issues. General provisions, franchise requirements and characteristics. Um, miscellaneous transitional provisions, franchisees providing communication service to customers, private communications facilities, liabilities and penalties, remedies not exclusive, review termination and cancellation, foreclosure and receivership, reports, books and records of the franchise, uh, time of the essence, equal employment opportunity, and violations. The complete ordinance is ma- is maintained by the City Clerk Treasurer at City Hall located at eighty sixty-one East Fifth Avenue, Calvert City, Kentucky. That's the summary.
This is for the introduction of the ordinance.
Right. The entire ordinance is there if you want to read it. Um, as you guys already know, uh, we're not collecting a franchise fee directly from cable television providers. We're receipt, there's a, there's an alternate provision in the statute whereby this, the state collects the franchise fee from the cable television providers and then divides it among the cities. As it turns out, that's the most lucrative, um, alternative for Calvert City at this point, so that's what we do. Um, this ordinance sort of leaves the door open so we can go e- either way. Whatever way is more lucrative for the city, we have the ability to go either way. And otherwise, um, it just, uh, governs how somebody can come in, use our right of ways to put in their infrastructure, what they can do, can't do, what fees they have to pay in order to do it. Um, that's it. And all the details are in the, are in that franchise, and you can see the thing's about forty pages long. We use Linda Aine as our expert for doing this, and, uh, this is what she does for a living. So that's why we have a forty-page ordinance. There you go.
This is for the introduction, you have a motion, here it is.
Correct.
I'll make a motion.
Motion to introduce, do I have a second? Now a second.
Second.
Motion in the second to introduce the ordinance, repeating ordinance twenty ten dash oh one and replace. Just claim it, call it off.
Councilman Babcock.
Yes.
Councilman Coburn.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilman Rao.
Yes.
Councilman Harrington.
Yes.
And Councilman Stokes is absent.
Just blare. You are on. The stage.
Well, I will make this quick, um, just to go, kind of go over with what's happening over the next couple of months. Um, Food Truck Friday started, uh, evening edition last, not last Friday, but the last, the Friday before that, so, uh, two Fridays ago, uh, the first Friday, all three food trucks sold out at six o'clock. Um, so we had some people that were a little bit unhappy, but, you know, the food trucks were happy because they sold out. Uh, the next Friday, we had, this past Friday, we, we had eight trucks. And, uh, they all did really well. Uh, everyone said that they had a steady crowd and, you know, people kept their distances and, um, you know, enjoyed the event that was outside. And, um, so we'll, we'll continue to do that through October the sixteenth. Um, October the sixteenth will be our last day for Food Truck Friday, and it goes from four to seven P M. But, uh, on that October sixteenth date, we plan to have, um, an outdoor movie, uh, we'll show Hocus Pocus. And then, Calvert Area Development Association will be giving away free pumpkins. So if you come, you get a free pumpkin, you can watch, uh, an outdoor movie and have your Food Truck, uh, Friday. And then, um, you know, just kind of enjoy that evening. The next day, October seventeenth, will be the Pink Walk. Um, although we can't really have a large gathering together, we are going to do a virtual pink walk. So, uh, Memorial Park will be decked out in pink. Uh, we'll have, we'll be selling luminaries, T-shirts as we normally would. And those will be, uh, set up along the path in Memorial Park, which is about a point five mile walk, so we're encouraging everyone to go down there on that Saturday, get your family and friends together, um, in a small group, and between the hours of nine A M. and noon, go down, take the walk. Uh, take photos while you're down there. We'll have lots of different options for photo opportunities and share those photos on Facebook. Um, also, we'll be telling people stories, so if you know of anyone that is a survivor or someone that may be struggling, uh, that we can highlight over the, the month of October, that would be awesome. Just send me those names and contact information uh, so that we can include them, uh, to be recognized at the event. On October thirty-first, we usually have our uh, trick or treat. I think, um, the couple places that I've talked to, they are going to transition their, uh, trick or treats to a drive-through, uh, where you just drive through and pick up your bag of candy and go to the next one. Uh, I haven't talked to a lot, so, so that's just what I've heard so far. Um, but what we, Kada is going to encourage is to, um, submit a carved pumpkin and, um, for a pumpkin carving contest, so you will submit your con, your, your, um, carved pumpkin on the, uh, Thursday and Friday before Halloween. So that is the twenty ninth and thirtieth. You will submit your carved pumpkin, and on the thirty-first, we're going to set all of those pumpkins up in, uh, Old Park. And that night, we'll have a drive-through pumpkin path. So you can drive through, look at the pumpkins, and then Kada will have a bagged, um, gift at the end of the, of the pumpkin path. So that will be on Halloween night. And so I encourage everyone to get a pumpkin and carve it and submit it for the carving contest. Um, other things that we've got going on, the yoga in the park has been going really well, it's been a small crowd, but consistent. It is every Saturday and Monday, Saturdays are at, at eight A M. and Mondays at six P M. Um, it has been in Memorial Park, and then it also has been at Kentucky Dan Village State Park. We've been altering those days. Um, and then the last thing that I wanted to talk to you guys about is the strategic plan. Um, last meeting, we went over the results from the survey that was sent out to, um, our residents and surrounding, um, people in the county. And, um, I'm going to send you guys a list of questions that you guys really need to think about. And in those questions, develop some priorities that you think judging by the results of the survey are important to our city. Take those, take those results, and you guys put it, put it, think about it, and think about some strategies and, um, goals that you think that we need to reach for. And then, uh, we will come up with a date, uh, sometime in the next couple of weeks to, um, have a workshop. And we will sit down and come up with a seven-year, uh, long-term strategy on our goals. Um, and, um, long-term, short, short-term, uh, midterm goals, uh, for the next seven years. So that is exciting, and that's all I have.
Hey Blair.
Yes.
I would, I would like to, um, create a flyer to send home for the, um, pumpkin contest. So if you don't already have a flyer, I'll create one and send it to you and let you look it over.
Yeah, I'm working on it, so I will send it to you.
Perfect.
Are you sending it virtually, or will it be, does it need to be printed?
Um, I was going to do both.
Okay, okay. How many do you need to have printed, is it still three hundred?
Just give me one.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you Blair, all this sounds great.
Oh, and the, uh, yard sale went really well, by the way. We had twenty-two yard sales and, um, I know I talked to Timmy, uh, Davis, he had a yard sale, and he said that he had talked to someone that was from Carbondale, I think, is that right, Timmy? I don't think he's listening.
That's crazy.
He's not listening.
Tim said it was Cape Girardeau.
Cape Girardeau, okay, from Cape Girardeau, so, um, so that's awesome. Get people in and, um, the people that have the yard sales that I talked to, they did really well, uh, stayed consistent, uh, busy throughout the day, so that's always good. That's all I got. Yeah, promise.
Any other questions for Blair? You have any else, if they have? Okay. Tim Haskell's on the line. Some hands and engineering. Tim, you've already given us good information.
He is, and he's awake. Um, as I indicated before, we expect to hear or actually see the FAA's NIPPIUS report, it's their required biannual report to Congress on the state of aviation and airports specifically. And we expect that it will confirm that Calvert City is once again, uh, in line to receive, uh, the annual entitlement money of a hundred and fifty thousand a year. Um, we haven't seen that report yet, it's required to, by the end of the fiscal year, so we expect it on the twenty-eighth. I'll let you know as soon as I hear, or if I hear in the meantime, but I'm sure that, uh, I'm sure that we'll hear fairly soon, one way or the other. Um.
How long have we been off the NIPPIUS report?
Uh, this will be, this is the fourth year without, without the money. Now, having said that, I will say that the FAA has offered, uh, grant money to the state uh, in lieu of receiving entitlement money. Uh, unfortunately, it came with so many caveats and requirements and wherefores and whatnots, uh, that this, it was, uh, it was in everybody's best interest not to accept the money. And they put limitations on it such that it was virtually impossible to use. Um, for example, this summer, they offered a hundred and, a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars for paving. But the specifications on the pavement that they require would have made it more expensive than the state doing it all themselves, so the state rejected, or they didn't reject the money, they just said, no, thank you. Um, uh, the, the other thing I will add is that I, I cannot express uh, more the importance of the two votes that were taken today to move, move the airport forward and make it become a real airport and not just a stopover for somebody visiting the state park. Um, it's a big step in the development of this facility and the use of some pavement that has been wasted for decades. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Tim? Tim, I have reached out to McConnell's office on the security fencing for Wildlife particularly. Um, and I've been assured that they will give us assistance once we get through the election process. The center obviously is tied up right now in the middle of an election and, um, so that'd be fine, if they could do that the first year, that would be awesome. So we'll go after that the first year and see what can't get that million dollars from the federal guys with that fence around that airport.
That gives us a place for the turkeys to hang out securely, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, we'll be siphoning security for them.
We'll make sure they're in there when we've put the final piece of fence up.
Oh, they can get in there.
Yes, they can.
Okay, um, before we get into the project report, John, you have, there's a lot of projects to report, report on, but I want to get this nine-one-one thing before we just go away. Good, let's go, let's go on down to that nine-one-one thing, and we'll come back to projects. Let's see who's on, Davis, are you out there?
Yes, sir.
Will you tell the council the services provided to the police department through nine-one-one, what are the primary services they provide to you?
Dispatching, they answer all nine-one-one calls for us. And then after hours, during hours, we answer from, Beth answers from eight to four, and then after four o'clock, central picks up, uh, non-emergency calls, and then any emergency calls comes, that comes in nine-one-one goes through central dispatch.
Do, do, do you have the same problem that I'm hearing in the county that other, particularly fire districts are having with the ability to communicate that nine-one-one system?
Well, it's actually the radio system is what the problem is, and has been for years, it's been a problem since I heard on back in eighty-nine. I mean, this has been an ongoing problem and will continually be a problem, I'm assuming, because communications changes as time goes on, so it's going to be an issue, but today, um, hopefully, um, I met with Mr. Freeman and he did get the, uh, the new piece of equipment installed in the Giraffenville Tower and in the Cowherd Tower today, this afternoon, so I'm hoping that with those three new pieces of equipment installed in them towers, that hopefully our communications, uh, will be better than they have been in the past. But yes, we have had an issue, I think all of first responders, and I think everybody's pretty much aware of the issues we've been having as far as the communications are concerned, and that's the radio infrastructure itself, and that's fire, police, ambulance, uh, all of our first responders.
I, I watch with interest. A meeting the other night, as you've had. Other first responders there. And gleaned from that meeting that. Countywide. That that is. Probably the most significant issue related to emergency response. To ability to communicate that the county that you not have. So are, are we? Is your department placed in harm's way because of the failure to be able to communicate with those radios?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, that goes without saying. That's one of the most important pieces of equipment we have on our, that we carry with us daily. A more important than our weapon is our radio and I like I said, that speaks for the firemen also, firemen and. Our park rangers, our, you know, rescue squad, all these people that communications is the first line of. Of everything for us. It's our lifeline and especially if we're out here on a call or something and the communications are down and things aren't working. I mean, it puts our life in, in danger and the way things are nowadays, we don't need anything added. To make our job any harder than it already is, so. But that's been an issue. Communications have been an issue in this county for quite some time now and like I said, hopefully. You know, uh, we can come together. And try to come up with a solution to the problem and hopefully with these new pieces of equipment that was installed. Especially today, um, in Giraffinville and in Calvert, which would be the north end of the county. We'll know probably within the next few days if it's gonna. Be any better or if it's gonna be the same or if it's gonna be any worse. So that's kind of where we're at right now.
From, from the other night. I took away from that meeting that. All, all, all the concerns expressed by emergency responders. Across the board. Of the poor communication equipment. Has. Suddenly not. See the same. Level of concern. Within those who not, not use the system, but who are over the system. Close to you. Can you make it contact in nine one one? They are responsive to your needs? Done? Or are they just?
I'm sorry, Lynn, I didn't catch it. Somebody, I heard typing, so I didn't quite catch your question.
Okay, the question is. Will you express your concerns to nine one one related to the inability to communicate? Do they seem to be responsive to your concerns? Or do they just nonchalantly pass them off?
Normally what we do is we make the, we make our complaints to nine one one dispatch itself. Now, as far as that goes, you know, as well as I know, Calver City. Has always had that outside the realm of, of the hub itself being so far north that we are. Um, I think even the council members are aware of that, but as far as the problems with the radio systems has been made known for many years and like I said, that. Lynn, this goes back several years. I've been here longer than anybody in the county. Thirty one years. The other night they said there are people talking twenty years and so forth. I think Brian Roy spoke and it said something back in eighty nine. When they implemented nine one one, which I was here when they implemented nine one one back when Marsha Penny was here and Brian Roy and them. Got together and implemented nine one one, but you know, the communications back then was still an issue. As far as that goes back when we had a trunking system with crystals and then now with the newer stuff that P twenty two five. You know, it's just, it's a, I don't know, I'm not a communications expert, but by any means, but I don't think it's something that's. Gonna go away anytime soon. It's gonna be an issue. Depending on the type of towers you have, any dead spaces or spots that you have within the areas or how you're reaching it, but. Apparently the, uh, my understanding too is that everybody else that has complained, that has kind of fell on deaf, deaf ears. But like I said, it seems like here within the last couple of weeks, maybe because of everybody's been complaining. That it looks like that there has been some type of a. Effort to get the radio system up and running better. Now, like I said, I don't know. You will know within the next couple of days if it's gonna be any better since they got those last two new pieces of equipment installed in Giraffinville and Calvert. Today, actually. So that's my hope is that it will increase the ability to be heard. Received and heard, not on our mobiles, but on our walkie talkies. I say walkie talkies, old school radios, our handheld radios, so.
So if you have a concern. Who do you report that concern to?
I was talking to Mr. Freeman today. He, he informed me that if we have any issues with. Dead spots in Calvert with that new piece of equipment that was turned on today to. Notify central dispatch and they have a form that they will fill out. And submit that so that they will be able to get that to the people who are doing the radio systems. To try to get that alleviated, any problems there may be as far as the dead spots. So that was told to me today.
Does the formal approach now is to report it to?
Central dispatch, yes, yes, that's correct.
Completed authentication and gets that to drop people to get it.
Correct. That was my understanding today.
Tim?
Yes, sir.
Tell the council what nine one one does for fire.
Like David said, they answer all, all of our calls. Everything. Like if there's, if like somebody falls in fire. Or, or wreck, it goes directly to nine one one and then they dispatch us out. If we don't get dispatched. And can't hear it. We're not really no good. And as you know, in fires, you've got to get on a fire very, very quick. On a wreck, you know, time is, is of the ultimate in saving someone. It just, it's, it's not clear. It's not clear. We have to ask two or three times. Gene, you can attest to this. He don't, he don't even get to page him sometimes. And you know, if he don't get it, he can't respond and.
Now, then why would some firemen get paid and others not get paid?
That is a question I don't know. I. It's probably.
Have we asked a question of nine one one?
They're calling it because it's, it's heels and hollers and, and. It, it just seems like every time you go there with a concern, it's, it's that they have a different excuse. Well, this got unglued or that got unglued or. An antenna was thrown wrong.
And the other day you had a dispute. Where you had weekend jurisdiction in the county department and corporate city limits. You had a paid out. For, was it obstruction fire?
Yes.
But it wasn't paid to you, it was paid to another unit that did not have that jurisdiction. Is that hopping on?
That's, there was two departments. There was two departments paid to a Calvert City call. One of them should have been paid along with Calvert. We have what's called mutual aid agreement with the surrounding fire departments. Any structure fire, two departments are paid at the same time. One of the departments that went is, would have been our mutual aid for this call. It was interstate park. I think what's that? It was interstate park. Give or spill is our mutual aid for that. And Calvert was not paid, but Powell Brown's was, which Powell Brown's virtue has never been paid. I've been fighting this issue. For ever since I was appointed chief. I've got a list down there in my office of calls that were wrongly dispatched. Like David said, we have a form that's, that we fill out and then. Here, here again, I go back to the same issue. You, you send it and complain, well, we're gonna get that fixed. We're gonna get that fixed. Well, it ain't fixed. It's, it's, it's very frustrating. You know, when you're told, well, it's gonna get fixed, it's gonna get fixed and it ain't, it ain't fixed.
Because I don't, I don't know what kind of board they use to give the information for. I look at the firing and block district that fires, actually occurring. I would think with the technology that we have. That someone gets hit with a fire on the board, opt to be automatic as the departments that should be. Moving to that scene.
That, that's, that's true. It's the way it's put into, it's programmed into the system is how it's dispatched. You know, the police department gets paged to some calls, but the fire department don't. And I've said and said multiple times, if you page the Calvert City Police Department, you page the Calvert City Fire Department. If both departments are needed.
Okay, so when you, when you do that, you, you, you report that to who?
I call Chris, the director of nine one one.
Are they? And they're not having time to fix that again or?
No.
But hasn't been fixed.
He did, he did say the other day, uh, I think it was a week ago today, matter of fact, he called me after he read the, the complaint. He's, he said that, that, you know, they're gonna fix it and it shouldn't just be an overlay. The fire department should be an overlay of the police department. And that's the first time I've read that from him.
Now, how, how long have you been on the, on the job?
Uh, right in here, almost in here.
So we've been there enough sufficient time to at least have a handle on that one for you?
Well, yes, I agree. When he comes in here and his first words out of his mouth was, well, this won't be no problem. This is just a computer issue. You know, and here we're still, in my opinion, worse than we were.
Sometimes computer issues are a problem.
Getting back to the radio issue. And, and agents, no offense to you or any other police officer. I, I just hope that they don't fix the police channel. And that makes everybody happy and forgets about the other agencies like the fire department, rescue squad and the ambulance service. That, that is my fear. Of, of what's gonna happen. They're gonna fix the police departments and sheriff's office and forget about the other three agencies.
You, I, here's your question of both of you. Do, do you feel like? That the service provided to us, the nine one one? There's, there's, there's a complaint. Oh, this is that complaint, this type of naive in the fiscal court meeting. Few minutes ago. So the judge implied. That since the city Calvert invented. I'm assuming it's harder than maybe harder to do as well. Do not specifically provide funding for nine one one. And we have no voice. And it seems to me that. If we are gonna have our needs met in our community. Then we have to have a voice. I, I was irritated a few years ago. When they disbanded that original board. And they took away our voting rights and our voices. And we gave all of that to a single division. They get to operate, particularly we have so many units involved in so many different areas to be concerned about. And I'm wondering why if we do not move the air. To have a formation of a board. Or the entities of the cities and fire districts. And the other entities involved in emergency response can't have an equal voice sitting at the table and talk about issues and get them resolved. And to work with the EMS manager to seek to assist them runs at its highest capability for the residents of the county. I don't understand why we can't do that. And I'm wondering if it might not be to our advantage to explore. What other opportunities might avail themselves to us? With other nine one one providers that could provide that service to us. We understand that our outlier to that would be the same as this county. The tacks, the phone taxes would be redirected from the county to the service providing, providing to us. If you have a voice in that new system. If you have the ability to communicate and the ability to get things done and things to occur. It's also you have to score depending on who you have. But as long as you don't have a voice, you're at the mercy of the person who has the voice. And that one doesn't seem to be responding to your needs, at least to the level we want them to respond.
I, I will say this. I do think. I'm talking on the fire side. I do think that we are ignored sometimes. An incident. That I will tell you about, we were working a wreck up on the dam. And I hollered and hollered and hollered at dispatch. You know, I don't even remember what we needed. We needed something. And. They claimed they couldn't hear me. But I've had other firemen that wasn't on the scene say, we heard you every time, heard you every time. They weren't passing drought. You know. That's just one incident that I can remember. It's, it's kind of weird that. They can hear me on a handheld, but they can't hear me on a, a dispatch. You know. Our radios are our lifeline. If we're in a burning house and. We need help, we've got to be able to communicate. And, you know. I don't want to have to go to somebody's family and say, hey, your. Your spouse is not coming home tonight.
Has the service gotten worse within the last year or is it just a continuation? Or can you tell? I mean, I'm just.
I would say it's not gotten any better. It's, it's just been. Bad. It's been bad for a while.
I've, I have a question just for the discussion. So David mentioned this has been a problem for a long, long time, communication countywide. And really, I'm just, just asking to be educated here. We all know how city government works. There was all this, the commotion of this has. Really kicked up in the last week or two and equipment's been installed, been installed in the last week or two. Sounds like we got our share today, which is great. Uh, but we all know that city government, uh, did not approve, buy, deliver this equipment in a week. So this has been. In the works for a while and does this equipment that we got today? That, that, does it promise to fix these problems? Like, are we headed in the right direction? I mean, I, it's, I know that we obviously have a bad history and poor service previously, but are we headed in the right direction or is this?
Well, I, I'm gonna interject here and clarify. I mean, we've heard. David and Tim talk about three problems. One is poor radio. Own, own the frequency. So we've got, uh, Calvert C P D and David, if I get this wrong, unmute yourself and jump on me. You know, on the police frequency, they've made some improvements today. Then we heard an observation about the fire frequency. Uh, it's, it's pretty weak and I think that, uh, for instance, some tones. The, the various monitors have to catch the two tones and continuation in order to activate and alert our firefighters. So we've had weakness in the fire frequency as well. Poor performance. And then the third thing that we discussed, that Tim discussed was that the CAD system. I don't think it's as bad on the police side, but the CAD system, that is. was that the CAD system, I don't think it's as bad on the police side, but the CAD system, that is the mapping that's in the consoles. When a call comes in from a location, the mapping, the CAD system for dispatch at Calver City Fire Department's been inaccurate for a very long time. And, uh, Tim's tried to get it improved and had, has had several meetings. John's been involved with Tim trying to get this improved, and it's still, as evidenced, I think that, that the incident that he talked about was, if it wasn't last week, it was the week before, it's still not right when, when they thought they had made some major improvements. So, um, I'm gonna ask out loud to Tim or David, whoever wants to answer, the, the pieces of equipment that are installed are on the police frequencies, correct? Is it only police?
Correct.
Okay.
That's mine, it's only the police frequency.
Yeah. So tho- those are kind of the three issues. I mean, poor performance of the police frequency, poor performance of the fire frequency, and those are the two agencies which we dispatch as city entities. But our citizens need the other entities to be dispatched accurately, ambulance, probably the, the third main one, and, and they, they experience difficulties as well. And, uh, there's been a lot of talk going on. And I'm, I'm not gonna instill the mayor's thunder, but Jeremy, you seemed, I mean, does that help some of your questions that you had, you think, to try to explain where we are, the three issues?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, government wheels turn very slow, so the fact that, I'm just trying to figure out where we are in the timeline of this stuff getting rolled out, and are there fire, uh, frequency others in an upcoming budget? You know, are we headed in the right direction, or are we not?
I, I think that's exactly the lack of input that's frustrating everyone.
Yeah.
Not knowing the timeline, not knowing the budget or, or the priorities. Because, I mean, um, I gotta be careful. I'm gonna probably step on top of what Lynn was saying. Judge Neal had, had commented, um, in the last couple of, uh, fiscal court meetings, and I think that's his point, is that Calver City government itself does not move funds, Glenda does not write a check to nine one one emergency dispatch. And since we don't contribute in that way, and we contribute in many others, and we're gonna go into that, I think, uh, that we, we don't have a call on, on what happens there anymore. And, uh, but we still have two agencies that we have to get dispatched, and our Marshall County citizens, which also happen to be Calver City citizens, need to get expert, um, help when they need it.
So who does directly contribute to nine one one? Just the county? Cause that's just a play on words then, if, if they're, or there are other entities?
Exactly. There, there are, I don't know where the mayor's going. I've interrupted him. Lynn, you want me to?
But it just ends up quitting the tax or the, or funds charges on the right business account city goes to nine one one.
Okay, well, y- you guys have had to put up with me talking about interlocal agreements and that sort of thing. This one's my poster child. Back whenever, uh, this one expired, and I did, you know, you learn something new every day. And evidently fiscal courts cannot enter into agreements that exceed twenty years of length. And, and Greg, that's, I didn't trace that back to scripture. That was said in a meeting somewhere. So that, that is why the interlocal agreement ended, and at about the time the interlocal agreement for Marshall ended, and that was Calver City and Harden and Benton, uh, agreeing to establish nine one one, which David remembered from the beginning with all the people who first got our call center going. That was what that interlocal agreement was about, was getting the, uh, tax money off of the copper phone lines into a consolidated nine one one center. And that was what that interlocal agreement was about, and since those monies were flowing, there was a board, and there were some other things that were put in so people would have a voice. That was, that'll, that expired. I was gonna say some other things, allowed to expire, whatever. I think, I think that Calver City at one time tried to take the leadership and get people to the table. Uh, I don't know if that was on Judge Neal's watch or not, but the fact is that, uh, right now, those monies are flowing to the people who dispatch us. But there's not a, there's not an agreement governing, governing that money that, that would flow, you know, through the Calver City call volumes to nine one one. I mean, nine one one, Marshall nine one one is dispatching us. Uh, and that money's flowing to the right spot, but I think that, uh, it, it needs some look at, um, crossing the Ts and dotting Is. And the fact is that, you know, knowing the timeline of improvements and, and communicating and having people be able to identify shortcomings in a constructive fashion is kind of really what, first off, we want the stuff to work, and then the second one is maddening, is I think, uh, not, not having a voice and, and not having communication. And at one point, you say, you know, Calver City, you're not contributing, so you don't have a voice. I think that's been said, more or less. And, and it's not factually incorrect as far as governmental entities are going. We don't have a line item on our budget that says that. But we sure have taxpayers in the city paying, paying county taxes and payroll taxes, can't pay in county taxes on, uh, real estate taxes, and there's money flowing through our government entity to, to that government entity that needs to be, uh, corrected. So there, there should be a voice. There ought to be a way that, that folk can get input and, and see effective change. And that, and there's been a big dust up in the last, you know, what? Two months, I think people have finally re- reached a boiling point where they're just tired of it. And, and, and honestly, you know, in this crazy world we're living in, um, now, especially David and his folks, you don't know what's gonna come uncorked on you, and if you don't have reliable radio communication, that's a pretty big deal. That's a real big deal. And I think that, uh, you know, there were pieces ordered, and, and there were some Facebook posts and different things, but I mean, there was some stuff going on, and it just wasn't clearly communicated and what the priority was, and, and so when people don't know anything, they, they, you know, wanna know, and, and kind of start the dust up, if you wanna call it that dust up. But the big thing is David needs a radio that'll work. So does every other police officer, uh, in, in the county, you know, so does every responder in the county. You know, the, the, the comment about, you know, not getting paged, if you don't, if you don't get the fireman paged and headed that way, you don't have any help coming. And it's just, just a, uh, not a strong enough radio signal or radio system, whatever. So hopefully David can report back to us that the shirt, that the police frequency's improved. And he'll get some time under his, uh, under his belt and, and report back that they've, they've helped them a great deal, I hope.
Yeah, I will. I do wanna make one thing clear though, when we're talking about taxpayers' money. Um, here in Calver City, and especially with the, uh, the, uh, city council members, uh, but most especially with the taxpaying citizens of Calver City, they do make sure, that I can't speak for Tim, but they do make, I, they do make sure that with the police department, we have top quality handhelds, top quality mobiles, and top quality base radios, two of them at the office. So yes, that is a line item budget for me, and it ain't, it's not our, our equipment that is bad or outdated. It's not ours.
Yeah.
Our, our equipment is new, it's updated, state of the art, best shit money can buy. For that reason, that's because it's that important to me for the life of myself and for the other seven officers that are, or six officers that I'm responsible for. And that has been and always will be top priority for me. Now, outside Calvert, when the signal goes to the towers, from the towers to central dispatch, there's your problem. That's the problem. So I want to make sure that the citizens, anybody may be listening or hearing that the citizens of Calver City do pay taxes for our radios here, so that, yes, and, and I do appreciate that. We have top quality radios. My guys feel confident with the radio, and I'm sure the fire department's the same way. But it's that in-between signal from Calvert to central dispatch is the problem. It's not our equipment. I wanna make that clear. It's not our equipment.
Yeah, well, thank, thank you, David. I mean, I, I just, you know, being too close to it, had assumed, and I think that was one, one too, is that each agency, part of their budget for, for, you know, fielding a top door police department, a top, top door fire department is, you've got a, you, you buy your own internal communication gear.
Correct.
And so what we're talking about nine one one is the system, and that's one of the things I think is, is, is appropriate for this conversation here going on, is, uh, at various times, we have, even without the interlocal agreement, Calver City has contributed some monies in the past to up, upkeep or put on a particular repeater or something. So clear ownership of the network, I, I do have to believe, I think, and, and David and, and Tim backed me up, clear ownership of the network, they're not shirking away from that. They say that's what they want, right?
Right.
Tim?
Yes.
Okay. So they're wanting to do, I mean, ultimately, if they're successful, when they're successful, you'll have a more reliable, um, network eventually.
Hopefully. Just like when we went from the analog to the digital or the P two five. When we were analog, they, the decision came up to go from analog to the P two five. Well, they had an expense on their end, but then again, Calvert, Benton, and even I'm assuming the fire department did too, we had a, a major expense because we had to change every one of our radios from analog to P two five. So now, if you're looking at going away from the P two five system and going to something different, there in itself is another problem that we have to go back and redo or resupply all of our handhelds, all of our mobiles, and all of our base radios again. So I'm like Lynn, and the bottom line is I do believe that we need some kind of a, uh, say, a, um, representation so that we know what's going on, uh, if a decision like that is to be made, that we're changing, that we can look back and say, well, hang on a second, you know, this is gonna be costly for the city of Benton, it's gonna be costly for the city of Calvert, it's gonna be costly for the fire departments, uh, you know, if we have to change not only handhelds, but base radios. So yes, that is a concern when we start talking about if the system's not good enough to sustain itself, the infrastructure, do we go with another plan? Do we go with another system? But my concern is, as a resident of Calver City, and the taxpayers of Calver City is, now wait a minute, well, can't we fix what we've got now? Because if we go with something new, is that gonna cost the taxpayers of Calver City money to change our handhelds, not only with the police, but with the fire department, and then still paying in the county taxes to change the infrastructure within the county? So it's a, it's a double-edged sword.
Did, did, do they control your connectivity to your various databases too, and they, they control that protocol? Or is that a bad question? So David, when we have like our, our computers in, in the, uh, in the cruisers or whatever, are they sending the information on your databases, is, uh, what's the protocol on that? You're on mute.
Okay, sorry, sorry about that. Yeah, they, um, that, all that information goes, that allows us to access NCIC link. In other words, we can dispatch ourselves, we can do, uh, do calls and things like, we can run plates, we can run driver's license and things like that.
But that's through nine one one?
Yes, but state police, state police has taken that. They kind of have a foothold on that, uh, just like when, before the MDT recertification that we would do was through DLCJT. Now it's through state police. State police is the one, that was the issue that we had. Uh, y'all may remember, uh, a few weeks ago, where that, I think it was in a paper, that, um, there was an issue with certification, or who, who was actually gonna sign off for our NCIC stuff, that we about lost it, and that state police was gonna come down and take our, uh, stuff that was in the paper, it's been a while back, but, um, so state has a big play in that, as far as that goes.
So, so can decisions made within nine one one dispatch affect how you access that information, or you got that through another provider now?
Yeah, well, that's, that was another question I wasn't aware of, that apparently we were with a, uh, system before. System we have now is, um, we had had before, but before the one we have now, we had another one, and it didn't work right, so we went to Interact, uh, which is, I think it's still called Interact now, that we're using now. It's my understanding that uh, nine one one is looking at changing that CAD system to another system, and it's supposed to be cheaper. I don't know. Like I said, therefore, I have not been privy to that information. I don't know. Uh, my cop, uh, Mr. Freeman informed me of it. Uh, it's been a few weeks ago, but I, before that, I had no idea that they were even looking at that. But what that does, that affects us, because that's a monthly, or that's a yearly um, fee that I have to pay per user. So, and that comes from the taxpayers of Calver City. So that's, that's a line item budget that I have to put in there. So I have to know how much that costs me. So you see the funds kind of, it's kind of mingles together. So yeah, I, I think it is very inaccurate for anyone to say that Calver City does not contribute to this whole system, no more than you could say that Benton doesn't contribute. I'm sure the, the mayor over Benton would highly disagree with that also. But, yeah, exactly, for, because I mean, they're like us, the, they, they see the inner workings on what the taxpayers actually pay, and then the main infrastructure itself, the taxpayers are still paying through, you know, uh, taxes and payroll taxes and so forth, so. It's a, I don't know. It's, it's, it's just an ongoing problem, and it's, has been for years. Uh, is it a quick fix? Absolutely not. Um, and I'm like Timmy, I agree with him. Uh, that hopefully they won't leave, you know, uh, leave the ambulance out, they won't leave the fire departments out, they won't leave, um, the, uh, rescue squad out, or, or anybody like that. We need our first responders, especially here in Marshall County, so.
Well, the, the, the connectivity to the database, again, is, is one that you need communication on, so you can plan it properly, and you'd hopefully have a little input into which direction it goes, right?
Yeah, so I mean, that would be very appropriate for any, any organization. When you have such a countywide, you got a countywide entities that are trying to do the same thing, yeah, I believe they should all be on the same page. Uh, quit finger pointing, come together as a group, or as a committee, or as a board, and resolve these problems, resolve these issues that we have. Uh, to me, that's the smartest thing to do. Um, and I'm not gonna argue with that in the least bit.
So what action, what power do we have? We, we can demand to see the table. We can't withhold any dollars, I assume?
I'm gonna go directly when it goes to the phone.
Right. So what actionable power do we have?
I'm just, I'm pretty roughing flood. What are the nine one one services are available in this region?
I didn't hear the question, Mayor.
I said, I've seen, I've seen here, David. What other nine one one services are available in this area? I don't think those are available.
Uh, state police is. You can always use, utilize state police. I think the la- the first time that that was actually brought up was back, I think, when, um, Judge Neal first got into office, we actually went to McCracken County, um, courthouse and met. Golly, it's been a while back, and the state police was there and spoke to us, um, about the possibility of going, uh, or looking at the possibility of, uh, what, you know, what would be the terms or funding for state police dispatching, you know, uh, these entities and so forth, so.
But my understanding, David, that, that the money follows the service provider. If, if we were to have a different provider for our nine one one service, revenue coming from the phone would be redirected to that new provider that works.
I'm not, I'm not for sure, but I, I would assume that it would be. I mean, that was, that would be plausible. I mean, I, I, I'm not for sure, though.
Well, the, the old school phone line monies are way down. And then, around about the time the, the agreement expired, twelve, I think, the, uh, the, the legislation on the, uh, cell phones and IP phones, uh, was brought through the, the state capitol. Uh, I think Mr. Leaper was, was involved heavily in that, so there's funds, uh, there's two piles of money on there too, one of which is a volume-related fee. Um, so it's my understanding, Mayor, that that money does follow the city. So what you're talking about is, is, is the potential for Calver City to change our PSAP, which the PSAP is the public service answering point. That's right. And to move out of there, what, what would be the, the financial part of that? Is that what, is that right, Mayor?
That's my first question.
So, so, uh,
There's that potential that, that other city, the county may want to do the same thing. Which seems to be for the nine one one service in Martha County, to, they were to lose the two cities of Calver and Benton. That that would be a significant revenue. We have two cities having service providing them thirty one nine one by different providers. That would just be.
Well, one, one, yeah, back, I think the memories. Is clear. Uh, when, when we were talking about it within the county. About the time that the, uh, agreement expired, we were talking about going to KSP. And, uh, you know, I'm an elected official, have an opinion. Uh, my problem with KSP is, uh. I'm sure they can dispatch very professionally. I bet they've got good communication people. My, my concern is when, when the next ice storm happens, where's Poro, Marshall County and Calver City in particular going to be in the hierarchy of. Concern on span of control. That's, that's one thing for me. We went somewhere else. The other thing is under the current deal is the fiscal court with the leadership of the judge have decided that. Uh, we're going to have an internal nine one one in the county. It's going to be organic. We're going to have one in the county and we've. You know, the, uh, we, no, no, we here, uh, the decision's been made that, that we're going to invest in a building. The decision's been made that they're going to invest in equipment. The decision's been made that they're going to hire a director. And even I don't think it's, I'm, I'm not, you know, letting any secrets out, but they're going to try to defray costs by making a, um, dispatch center that is. Offered for a price to other counties to try to defray the costs for our taxpayers. And if, if we, if Lynn, if, if we move to go to another one, one of those concerns is, is that. Our citizens who are paying the county tax, that, 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 you know, real estate tax, payroll tax. That, uh, you know, if, if we chose within the city limits to adopt another PSAP. Then our, our two agencies, which we dispatch. Um, wouldn't be able to take advantage of that view or of that investment. And, uh. You know, I, I, you know, it's almost like you'd be trying to prove a point to get some, get some input somewhere else. They'd be, you know. Liking to have you and, and would, you know, be, be, you know, engaging on what the plans were and, and, and what the needs are. Um, but man, it seems like the, the, the wrong move to, to, you know. You know, right now, every county, every citizen in the county gets benefit from the nine one one system. And it, it seems to be that, uh, the county to, that, you know, extra monies have to come in apparently. I haven't seen the financial statements, but the copper phone lines and the IP phones and cell phones aren't cutting it. So it's going to take extra to, to realize this vision. That the fiscal court has had. Uh, we, we didn't help select that vision. Uh, and it's where we're going. I, and I had to say that. Uh, I agree with, you know, with keeping nine one one this county, our city. We can afford a lot of nice stuff and I think that taking care of our responders ought to be one of our priorities. And so I, I don't take exception. Personally, and each of you have your own opinion. Um, I don't take exception to those decisions being made. Um, I don't know if, if, if they were really done. I'm not the radio guy. I think somebody said that earlier. Uh, I don't know if the system is, is gold plated or platinum plated. Or the, the thing is, the, the big thing is it needs to be effective. You know, we need good, good frequencies on fire or good frequencies on police and have accurate CAD, uh, CAD. And I, I believe that our nine one one officials are aware of it. But it's not being communicated or prioritized in, in a way that, uh, people are appreciating. That's my two cents worth. Uh, I don't know how to get a, how to get, uh, uh, some kind of input. How to, how to get some interchange. It's not just one way on that. Because I mean, the, the funds are coming out of that particular pile of digits that belong to the fiscal court. Not the pile of digits that belong per se to, to Calver City, but it, it just doesn't seem like we have much of a voice.
And, and to me, that's the, uh, that is the question. Why can't we, why can't Calver City and Benton and Harvey and the other entities to use the service? Why can't we all have a voice sitting at the table? So issues in their eyes, we can all be part of the solution. And we can move forward to opportunities where we might be able to. Contribute to improve the quality of the service they will want. And I'm very reluctant to want to give anything to anybody. Where I have no voice whatsoever, if you come and get my money and do what you want to do.
Do you think that, um, well, I, I understand what Jean's saying and I sort of agree with him. Uh, if we could meet with the commissioners and express our concerns. You know, that to me, that would be maybe the route we could go with through them because I do think that they have an ear. I know they've made some. Decisions and a lot of people weren't happy with just recently about this, but I think Monty, I think Kevin, I, I don't know Justin Lamb that well, but I think that. Kevin's friends and Monty would both be very open to hearing our concerns.
And I think they will call Monty tomorrow after our discussion, you know, we are because he needs to be aware. From our district, but. I think my opinion is that in order for us. Have any assurance that in the long, that in the long term. We're going to be able to receive the kind of service we want to receive and we're going to be able to be. A participant in that service to the highest benefit of the residents of Calver City. We are going to have to have a voice and Mr. Neil's going to have to give that voice. Back to the fiscal court, we'll have to give that voice. They took it away and they're going to give it back. And if they don't, the only alternative the city is going to be for all the city. Is either to do things the way they want to do them without any voice and just give them your money. Or to find other solutions to that nine one one problem by an outside source other than the Marshall County. Because if the revenue stops going to them, they'll be able to pay more attention than they pay now. As long as they do what they want and nothing changes for them, it's just federal government on a managed scale.
We have any idea how much revenue we are contributing through policies?
Usually we would know that.
No, I mean, it would, could the state not, if it goes to the state.
Now that information used to be made available to us when we had the boards. I'm assuming that they have all that information or, or. Mr. Freeman would probably be able to get that information as far as being.
When's the last time that, when was the board done away with?
Uh, I don't remember. It's been a while back.
Was it locked back or probably later?
You need to miss the group here and given lack of presentation.
I can't remember what.
They wanted to go through, uh, I'm thinking the renters taxes and stuff like that, but to, to get money for a new item. I'm wondering if that was about the time. I'm, I'm not sure, but.
I actually have something five, six years.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Yeah, it might, you might be correct there. I mean, as far as that goes, but. Like I said, one thing that I do want to clarify and I think a lot of, uh, I don't want anybody to get, uh. Any misunderstanding. Now I know Timmy has some issues with nine one one on some stuff, but my issue's not with nine one one. My issue is with the radio infrastructure, not nine one one. I just want to make that clear. That that's my issue is the radio infrastructure, the communications itself. Well, it'd be, yeah, I mean, that's, if they're taking care of the repeaters and the antennas out, out in the county, yeah. I mean, that would probably fall under them, I would assume. At one time, it seemed like to me that I can remember back when, uh. Let's see, I'm trying to think what sheriff it was. I've been through three of them. Um, that it seemed like that they would. That the sheriff was paying for, or the sheriff was actually at one time, maybe I may be wrong, but paid for. The repeaters out in the county, I think. I'm not for sure. I may have, uh. Maybe Kevin Byers, maybe I'd have to ask him personally to see. I don't know if he, but somebody, it seemed like to me a while. Few years ago that the sheriff was actually. Paying for that at one time or another and that there was a, uh, a, um. I'd have to look. It seemed like that there might've been one or two times that we actually shared the cost. We split that, those repeaters. I'm thinking I'll have to go back. I can't remember. It's been, it's been a while that far back. So. At one time there was a situ, there was maybe a po, a time that there was something like that where that. If a repeater went down or something, then the sheriff took the bulk of it, but this cost was. Split, especially if it was down on this end, if it was on the Calver Tower. Uh, one of the repeaters, it seems like I would have to go back and look on, on some statements to see, but it'd been a few years back if I can remember.
David, if, David, if we were to switch vendors to say state police, would your radio connectivity problems go away?
No, that you're never going to have, you're never going to get rid of your radio problems. It's just, uh, it's never going to be a hundred percent. Um. System. I, I think if you got any kind of radio tech guy, he'd probably tell you that you're never going to have a hundred percent connectivity. Regardless of, uh, you know, how small an area, how big of an area, you're just, you, you may have problems. And that's what, that's. I'm trying to, I'm trying to be optimistic. I'm trying to be positive here that since it seemed like the initiative was made. At least today to put up those two new, uh, piece of the equipment in Draftville and Calvert. Let's give it a while, give us, give it a little bit of time to see, get a little bit of feedback from the deputies, uh, from the police departments, uh, from the park rangers. Uh, and fire departments and anybody else that uses these, well, say it wouldn't. Then again, I kind of feel for Timmy. It doesn't, I don't think it's going to affect them. But with the police departments, let's see if that's going, actually going to work. Then if it's going to work and then I, I concur with Timmy. Let's make sure that we don't forget about the other three entities within the county itself, other than law enforcement. But, uh, let's see if this works. Uh, if not, if so, then we, we're making progress. It's. Took them longer than that needed to be taken, but at least progress is, looks like it's trying to be made and, um, I am thankful for that.
Yeah. So they, David brought up another great issue that I, I wanted to make too. That in the past, I mean, the, the network, the system, the network, the repeaters, the, the operation of the overall frequency. Was kind of bootstrapped together. Uh, and, and I don't know who the players are. I don't know what their level of expertise was. I know that. Our agencies have, have donated, not donated, have shared some of that costs moving forward.
Correct.
At various times. And so now as the Marsh County nine one one is, is going about it. And, and David Tim, they're trying to exert control over the frequency and take responsibility over the frequency. They're trying to make sure the equipment is, is put in cohesively. I've heard, I've listened to some fiscal court meetings about this. They're trying to make sure the tower space is not moved on them and they're having to pay rent here and rent there and. So they're, they're, you know, uh, going in and, and, uh, exerting control on some equipment that. Who the owner of it really is, is, is long, you know, it's long past. You know, you, you donate five thousand dollars to a piece of radio equipment. You let four or five years get under it. You're probably going to have to reinvest another five grand. I mean, I don't know. Not being the radio guy. But one thing that Calver City can offer, and if it's suitable, we've got, we've got some elevated points where you can put equipment. And I think that, uh, I, I as a council member would support, you know, us providing whatever we can provide that makes sense and the proper security to make sure. It gets the job done to aid their efforts in that. Um, and again, it's just knowing what's going where, when is really what we're lacking.
I agree with you. Some that you said, uh, Jane, it made me think, and I'm not, I'm not. Saying that the city needs to do this, but I want y'all to realize that that tower. Uh, the radio tower there by the water tower, that's Calver City's. Y'all own that. That's y'all's. So if somebody's got something on it that y'all don't want on it, that's the city's tower. So take that for what it's worth. That is not the county's. That is the city's. The city owns that tower. If y'all didn't know that.
And, and you know, and, and as long as it's a, 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 you know, an asset. That is worthwhile and, and the efforts of helping the, the county's, uh. Uh, emergency response and, and you know, county's communication overall, we can do it without, uh, you know, hurting other parties. This council members all in favor of, of, of letting, letting that happen. Uh, and, and, uh, you know, but we, you know, don't want to be parochial really too much, but you know, it's in the name of making sure that, uh, it, it. It helps and, uh, that we have, you know, that, that's not forgotten. I mean, David, you're right. That's not forgotten. That's not, that's not an insignificant investment. In that infrastructure.
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying. We, we are contributing because most people have, they, they, they charge you rent to be on their tower. And, you know, we don't, uh, we never have, but you know, that is Calver City's tower and we're allowing them to put, you know. Antennas and repeated, you know, equipment in our building on our tower, which is fine. I mean, you know, I, I don't mind. I think we should because it's a good area. It's a high. Elevation area to do so, but you know, so I think we're contributing on that end.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but again, to me, it just seems. That for the formation of a board. Where we have a voice. Um, can be greatly supportive of the nine one one program. Um, I, I agree with Jean. I am not all embarrassed that there's only very nice facility. I want to have a very nice facility. I want to have a state of the art equipment in that facility that, that can and will produce. The effect of protecting our men and women who are out there on the front lines doing their job. I want to ensure that. That it's as full of purpose as possible to be. And I do not mind demanding a qualified director. Someone who has experience, someone who'll be proactive, someone who will stay abreast of the issue and make sure that he goes in the right direction and stays there. No one man's going to be able to do that. He's going to need a bunch of people helping him. And it seems to me that the cities, if they were at a table. Could even look at creative ways to assist against and financing for certain issues. To benefit those cities and benefit the counties as well. If they were there helping to be a part of the thing. There's a win-win here for the county and a win-win for the city. We just have to get somebody to listen that this is the solution to a real problem. Let's fix it by putting back the board. Because for us to move would be costly, it would be a greater cost to the county. And even with the embarrassment outside the county to a local city. Going somewhere else for the service providing will be a great investment throughout the state. We just need to get this fixed. With your permission, we're going to move forward to see if we can, with some context, make that process begin to happen. With a clear understanding that there are other options and those options have to be explored. And, um, we just waiting to see what people can do. There's a, there's a timeless subject that needs to be fixed now. And I'm all about giving time for the new director to fix them. I am all about that. Making sure that what's happened tonight is effective. I'm all about that. But I don't want to wait. I have a lot of time and not be doing something while we're waiting. We can wait and move forward and devise an opportunity to protect the city of Calver City with the best we can. And particularly those men, women who work in our interest. Because in their lives, we're aligned for us. There's no reason for them to have to put up with, no reason. Okay. Anybody else say anything that you want to say about nine one one more than that?
Other than I, I think it would be prudent to find out how much money we're talking about, what kind of threat that would be.
Okay. John, you want to give us another on the projects? First to John.
Yeah, yeah, I'm here. Um, Civic Center. And the Civic Center, um, we've actually, uh, progressed with that. The concrete, all the concrete is poured. Um, looks really good. We've got, got eight and eight foot walkway all the way around it. There's two pads in the back. One is for patio, small patio. The other one is for, uh, utilities, uh, when, uh, garbage cans, et cetera. Um, ADA access, uh, is better than it's ever been. We've got ADA access on all sides at this point. Um, all the way across the north side is actually ADA access. Um, in the front, we have four, added four lot parking places there. We're now ready, almost ready. We've got to put rock in for our landscaping. Once the rock is out of the way, then we're ready to move on with the paving. Paving should be here. We're thinking probably sometime next week. Um, the windows and doors are in. If you hadn't had a chance to go by and look at it, I would suggest if you're just running by there and there's anybody in there, stop in and take a look. You'll be absolutely amazed at how well it's come. And just the addition of the windows and doors, how much brightness and how, uh, inviting it is inside. Um, but, uh, we've got, uh, the finisher, the wall finishers will be in this week to finish the, um, the sheet rock mud and get them prepped and ready for the, the painting, which is coming in, um, probably next week. They're also working this week on, um, installing the stone veneer. So, um, they're moving on quite well. We've already got our equipment in for the, um, catering room. It's ready to go. Then, um, and we've got the utility pole in or the, the light pole. It's not in, but it's ordered and should be in, into the week, first of next week. Um, for, uh, to replace the wooden pole that was taken out of the back. We're putting in a more of a decorative pole. Looks like our light poles or similar to our light poles, uh, to house those on. Uh, all the electricity, all the wiring going to the building now are, is underground or will be underground. Uh, there'll be no wires coming above ground attached to the building. They'll come in from underneath and go in at that point. Um, City Hall is coming along. Uh, they've removed, I think they pretty well got all the noses off City Hall around the windows. Um, they're going to, uh, they're right now, they're, they're building back so that they can put the, um, that I'll call it drive it because that's probably more common name of the EFA system in. And, uh, so they're moving along pretty good with it. Right now they're working also on the, um, support structure, uh, for the new, um, parapet wall or parapet that's up on the roof. Uh, that'll be a metal, uh, then the, the EFA system, uh, going on the walls, uh, both up and down. The, of course, the fuel system, uh, is in, has been in construction. Uh, it's got a little hiccup at the moment. Uh, but I think they're about a week away from actually being done with that system. And at that point, we'll be ready to move on with the fuel for, um, the fuel test. Check, make sure that the leaks are not, there's, there's no leaks in the fuel system. That's, um, other than paving, you're aware, you're aware of that, that's moving, moving forward. And then, um, well, that's, that's about it right at the moment. Um.
When do you think they're going to pave the Civic Center parking lot? Have a, not have a date on that?
Next week. Yeah, I was, that, actually that contract went to Murray Paving. Um, and, uh, we are just, we want to get the rock in, uh, because to install the rock, place the rock, the decorative rock in the, in the, the, uh, planters and then the area in the back, we're going to have to use skid steer and we don't want it twisting and turning on the, the front more so than the back, actually, on the south side, because we don't want it twisting and turning on new asphalt and then ruining what we've just spent so, been so hard to work to get it together. But, um, I talked with, um, Trace Curd and the, they're, they should be ready to go, uh, next week. Uh, Brad and I are getting, trying to get the rock in here so we can get it, um, placed, uh, and avoid all the heavy equipment on fresh asphalt. Oh, we also, I, I, I think, I don't know if I told you this last month or not, but we've ordered all the tables. Uh, they're the same style tables that we're using down in the Memorial Park for the new pavilion. We've got seven of those coming. These will not be bolted to the ground, uh, but they will be of sufficient weight that you're not going to pick it up and walk off with it. So they, they, I've made sure that the weight on that one was about a good three fifty.
It's going to take four.
It'll take a couple of guys to move those.
When will they be in?
Sir?
When will they be in the tables?
Oh, ma'am, okay. Uh, I'm not exactly sure when because they're coming, of course, from Dumore and Dumore. Uh, it depends on when they run them, run the, you know, run that product. So it could be six weeks. It could be ten. Uh, if you'll know, sometimes the benches were, take some time to get in as well, so.
So there's not any tables down there now?
I'm sorry?
Are there any tables there now? That's probably the new one.
There are some old tables down there now. People can utilize it as far as that goes, but we don't, they're not, they're, you know, but they're the older ones that have been down there for a while.
Yeah, I got you. That's good.
We do have, and I, I was trying to get this. I, I, I thought after thought, after the beginning of the process of the City Hall renovation, when you look at those machine gun terraced windows, um, I asked John to have this contractor price a full length window in those four, four locations, in Roger's office, Blair's office, and including the front office. Get them down so you can see out them in, for the, for the ladies inside the building. And that'd be a plus. Also, it'll go a lot better to the building outside. It doesn't give it that, I don't know, that sort of, yeah, fortress look. Um, I don't, I can tell you that Jane Euro is going to be, in my opinion, probably somewhere around ten to twelve thousand dollars. Those ones will be pretty expensive, as far as them. So we'll get that cost pretty soon and then we'll get back with you. And I'm sure I have to get that done. And this is the time to do it. Because we're doing the work anyway, cutting the hole, basically now, making the wall look good. There may be a delay in the way the windows will come, so there may be some real Kentucky windows, call plywood, out there for a few days, but we can get by that. We need to, we get some poster and put a poster on that plywood, make it look good.
Well, if, if you, if you melt down the material, uh, that had been in the cannons that were stuck out of those windows, you could probably pay for that.
Just so you know, we'll, we'll get that, get that going. And the, and the ladies in the front office, pretty exact about anyone who can see out of. I don't know. John, anything else? Can you project? First to John.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I can't hear. What was your question again?
And you have anything else?
No, so that's it.
Good job. The station looks so good and I'm pretty excited. A bit more work to be, to do after we did that, but it just looks so good and they just hardly, they worked hard to make it just excellent and quality, really good. Okay. Um, I don't think there's anything else on the agenda. Either you have anything, I don't know. Jean, you have anything?
Well, the, the nine one one thing was, was something that we really, that I really wanted to get into and I appreciate it being on, on the agenda. Um, I've had, I've had some calls. Understand that we, we, that the, there was a su- a, a subject app, apprehended and arrested that was down in the great swamp, running around and evidently there's still some game photos, game cameras that there's still some activity there. And, um, is there anything happening there that we should be aware of, Chief?
He was actually arrested by Fish and Wildlife and charged and, uh, sent to jail and I think, uh, pre-trial or probation, I think it's pre-trial, um, released him. Um, uh, Jason Darnell emailed me or texted me back when they let him out. Uh, so he's back out. I haven't heard anybody mention seeing him or anything, so I don't know if he's still around here or not, but they did. Um, they did let him out, but Fish and Wildlife did find him, charged him, put him in jail, and then they let him out. So that's all I know. What was his name?
Yes.
I have no idea. Let's, uh.
He, he was from away. He was, uh,
Yeah.
He wasn't local.
No, Lord, no, 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 uh, no.
Okay. So that's, all right, that, that's moved forward then. Okay. Uh, no, no merit to it. The nine one one thing was the big deal for me.
Chris?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Timmy?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
Jimmy?
Oh, sir.
I, I, I jumped so early.
We still looking for executive session?
Yes, we are. John, you still available? Greg, are you, are you still around?
Yeah, we're sp- we're still here.
Let's do the executive session. It's going, we have some property we need to talk about purchasing, so we need to do executive session with that.
All right.